Six thirty in the government center, let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Bridge.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Merzick.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Finsland.
Here.
Herrick.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Dobek.
Here.
Now Wiki. Emmert. And Sather. I'll present.
Everybody's here, well, we have an occasion here, I'm gonna call up Counselor Anderson to the podium here. Now, before I read this plaque, no one in this entire city can ever question your dedication, your passion, your commitment to public service, in fact, I was having a conversation last night with Counselor Bridge, and Tom was telling me about this incredible commitment to this community and the civic pride that you have and all this selfless service that you've given to our community, and I've had the privilege of witnessing that for seven years as mayor, longer with Mr. Bridge and Mr. Finsland, who predate those, my years here.
They predate dirt.
They predate dirt, they, so, but, we're gonna miss ya, Ed, and you've been a colorful, engaged, always, you know, you're well-versed in every subject, you never came unstudied or unprepared, and we appreciate that, so, an appreciation of your hard work and dedication in your district and all the committees you served on for the betterment of this community, specifically the Metropolitan Interstate Council and serving as Vice Chair on the Harbor Technical Advisory Committee, also a very special thank you for your dedication to the Superior Youth Organization, the Hayes Court Ball Field Complex, and securing both cash and in-kind donation for improvements to this site, and finally, to thank you for going above and beyond your role as a counselor in researching and providing expert information helpful to the decision-making process, for example, municipal signage, the value of trees to the community, and critical port and harbor issues, thank you for serving as this council's Vice President in 2006 and 2007, as its President in 2007 and 2008, and so, with much honor, we present to you this plaque, not only from myself, but from the members of this common council, Ed.
Thanks. I'm sure you'll be in good hands with my opponent, the Victor, D. S. McDonald, who's here in the audience tonight, so, get used to seeing her, and I thank you very much, as you know, I love this city, grew up here, I'll still be here, if any of you need any assistance, and I don't know what the future will bring for me, but I'll still be here, so, thanks.
I think it would be appropriate for, not all of you, but I think it'd be appropriate for some counselors, I think, to make some comments about one of your colleagues, so whoever would like to do that can certainly do so now, Mr. Bender.
Well, I just wanted to echo one of the things that you said, that Ed knows at least something about every subject that you can bring up, and I don't know anyone who is better read than Ed is, because he really has, has vast knowledge of many things, many things that the rest of us wouldn't even be able to comprehend or remember, so, I know I'm gonna miss him.
Thank you, Mr. Bridge.
Well, you know, I couldn't say it any better than you did, Mayor, so, you know, I would just reiterate some of your comments, but the biggest one being the knowledge of the Metropolitan Interstate Committee and the benefit that that's been to the council and to the city of Superior, I think that's a very big thing.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay, Esther, speak right up, sure.
Well, I don't need the mic, actually, I just wanna say I'm gonna miss Ed the most, I think, because without Ed, I don't know where I would be today, 'cause he sure has taught me a lot, he's my mentor, thank you, Ed, and I'm gonna miss you, I'm gonna need a direct line, telephone line to you.
Counsel President, Mr. Olson.
Well, Ed, I wanna thank you for the help that you gave us, new counselors, the last time around, and I'm sure you did it long before that, on behalf of my brother and what you do for the Superior Youth Organization too, I know he's real proud of you, I am as well, I've known you ever since we played ball back when we were young kids, hair a little different, different color and all that stuff, but, I wanna thank you for your commitment to this city, to this council, and everything else, and wish you and your family the best, and make sure they do stick around.
Mr. Henry.
Well, I tell you, Ed, that I really appreciate your dedication to the city, and I've enjoyed serving on the council alongside of you, and I've enjoyed when we've agreed at times, and I've enjoyed when we disagreed at times, and it's, you know, it's just been, it's been good, and it's a good thing, and I wish you the best.
Mr. McKenzie.
Yeah, Ed, you know, like I told you last night, I mean, I've only been on the council for two years, but for that two years, I always looked up to you and respected you, and what you had to say, I always listened to, so, thank you so much for teaching me so much, and I'm gonna miss you, and can I still have your cellphone number?
Counsel Vice President, Bob Finsland.
Yeah, Ed, you and I started about the same time on the council, and as a long-serving council member, I certainly have appreciated all your support, all the activities and the committees you've been on, and particularly on the MECC, I think there's been no one taking such a deep interest in that committee as anyone, and I know that we're all going to miss you there, we'll miss you on the council as well, and we might not miss those stinky cigars, but we'll, we expect to see you at some social gatherings occasion, and since we've both been active in other organizations at the same time, I'm sure I'll see you around and I do appreciate what you've done for us, thank you.
Bob, I've got cigars if you need.
Mr. Herrick.
Ed, I just wanna say thank you for years of dedication to the service of the city of Superior, thank you.
Thank you.
Ed, I'd like to say I'm gonna miss your stories, there's been many times when, you know, it gets a little tense, and then you tell one of your stories, and I can't help but smile a little bit, thanks.
Thanks, Ed, and Mr. McKenzie.
Well, that just reminded me when Greg talked about the stories, I think my favorite story will always be the attack of the Egyptian cat, I know, I know it's true, but I won't forget that.
I think that will be the top story of Ed's career, here's the attack of the Egyptian cat, absolutely, Mr. Olson, do you have a further comment?
With all that being said, Ed, we're all gonna miss you, and Denise, as you can see, you've got some big shoes to fill here, and we're gonna welcome you as well, thanks.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you, counselors, appreciate that, we'll call for the approval of the minutes.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Dobek, seconded by Mr. Bender, any comments, any corrections, seeing none, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, minutes are approved.
Item five is a public hearing, five point one is a public hearing for the community development needs and fair housing choice.
This public hearing is now open, anyone who would like to speak to this issue may do so now, second time, anyone who would like to speak to this issue can do so now, and for a third time, anyone who would like to speak to this issue can do so now, seeing none, this public hearing is now closed.
There's no action.
No action.
Item six is a consent agenda, Counselor McKenzie is requesting item six point one nine one A, be separated for discussion.
Motion by Mr. Finsland, seconded by Mr. Bridge, for the balance of the consent agenda, all in favor say, oh, Mr. Olson, I'm sorry.
I'd like to pull six twenty, item six, as well, please.
Six twenty, okay, six twenty, item six, okay, anything else, Mr. Herrick?
Same one.
Same one, okay, thank you, balance of the consent agenda, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, then we'll move to six point one nine one A.
Six point one nine.
Six point one.
Six point one nine one A is the Plan Commission, minutes of March seventeenth, two thousand and ten, to receive and file the canceled public hearing for the amendment to the project plan for tax increment District Number Eleven.
Yep, we have Mr. Peterson who would like to speak to this issue.
My name's Kevin Peterson, and, say again? How's that? My name's Kevin Peterson, before I begin, I just wanna say, Mayor Ross and the rest of you guys stole my thunder regarding Ed, I've been a longtime Fifth District resident, in regards to Ed, although I supported his opponent, I want, take the liberty on behalf of the Fifth District and everybody in the city to also thank Ed for his service, some of the fine words, Mayor Ross, I had one time down, but I know he's dedicated and took it very serious, and as I and others might have had differences with him on a few issues here and there, I know his heart was always in it, so, thanks it for your service, Ed. I didn't say that just to maybe get more than three minutes.
You know what, you know, I feel generous tonight, and I think the council does too, well, your three minutes starts now.
Well, the, regarding the TIF, TIF eleven, which is a central Blaine site, as you know, I was an opponent of that, nine million dollars the city spent, committed rather, to that project, and then on, recently on February sixteenth, the city administration presented a resolution to the council for the proposed amendment to the project plan, to in essence buy an additional building that wasn't in the original plan, on, a few days later, on February twenty-fourth, I discussed, Jason, I discussed with Jason what that process entailed, and he said, based, you know, based on the directive from the council that involved the public hearing on March seventeenth, eventually it would go to the city, county, and school district because of the tax issues that they had to write, to sign off on, and eventually back to the council in May, well, we're only in April, and it's already an issue, because on May seventeenth, I went to the public hearing, I had heard maybe it was canceled, but I went anyway, and in fact, it was canceled, and explained because the administration changed their mind on the direction, and I still to this day don't know why there wasn't a public hearing, Mayor Ross was there, Jason was there, the vetoes were there, nobody could answer who took the liberty to change the directive, the resolution approved by the council at the request of the administration, yet the administration took the initiative to cancel the public hearing, they wouldn't even weigh in on their opinion as to not acquiring this building, so, I don't know who makes the decisions around here, it's supposed to be a strong council, weak mayor, but this never went back to the council, yet the public hearing was canceled, I think there should be additional hearings on this, there've been two state-of-the-city addresses that haven't mentioned this nine million dollar investment in a TIF, I just don't know what's going on, I don't know if the council knows what's going on, I'd like to see a public hearing as was originally promised, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, you have a motion, a second, Counselor Olson.
I guess my concern on it is that when the public hearing was scheduled, it got sent out to the media, and there was a lot of people that were committed to going to those, whether it was Kevin, or, in my case, I sit on the WITC board, and the President of WITC got ahold of me and said, "We need you to be at this meeting to represent WITC through the school district," and just all of a sudden, it had been canceled, so, I get, Jason, if you could, if you wouldn't mind, just where this, how this came about, that it did get canceled, and why people weren't notified, or where the directive actually came from to go ahead and cancel this public hearing that was put out, published to the public.
Well, I think collectively, the administration decided to cancel the hearing, we ran, we looked a little bit more at the numbers, the numbers weren't prudent, we had, in a number of occasions, I exchanged some comments and some questions with Counselor Bender, as well as Counselor McKenzie, about some of their concerns, and we looked at it a little bit closer, and decided that, you know, at this time, it was just not the right time to purchase something outside the district, as you know, there isn't a lot going on in TIF eleven, we've got one building, and, you know, we're working pretty hard on trying to get some other things going in there, so, we essentially consulted with our council, our outside council, and decided to cancel the public hearing, on something that we knew we weren't gonna recommend, it's a lousy excuse, but a lot of times, these publications cost some money, I was trying to save about two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars on publication costs, I guess maybe in hindsight, I would've just gone through the public hearing, said we're not doing it, and go from there, if it would've caused us much problems, so.
Correct, because we were, yeah, we were withdrawing our requests, so, very simply, we're not asking you to consider it.
Exactly, so.
And, so, that's why.
Just a little point of clarification on some of Kevin's remarks, too, the resolution that you approved gave the Plan Commission the liberty to work through this process, it did not, you did not set a public hearing?
Right.
You gave the council liberty to do that, the Plan Commission set the public hearing, the Plan Commission canceled and received and filed a public hearing, so, that's just a point of contention, or a little clarification on some of that, and those issues as well.
Correct, because you appointed, you allow the Planning Commission to look at, they set the public hearing, we withdrew the request, they canceled the public hearing, so, this wouldn't be unusual, so, and we're not, we're not going forward with the request, we're not having you consider it, so, is that good enough, okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, six point one nine one A is received and filed.
Item six point two oh, item six, is the Public Works Committee, meeting of March seventeenth, to approve the request to change the speed limit on Twenty-Eighth Street, Eighteenth Avenue East, from Tower Avenue to East Second Street, to twenty-five miles per hour.
We need a motion, a second, to consider the issue.
Motion.
Mr. Olson, seconded by Mr. Henry, discussion, Mr. Olson.
I would like to refer this back to committee to get more information on it, right now, I'm not sure that everything has been weighed in, there's been some comments from public that this may not be as good an idea right now as originally thought, there's some issues with part of that road being a truck route, and, so, I would like to refer this back to committee.
A motion to refer holds precedence, so we need a second?
Second.
Okay, that ends discussion, we simply are now voting to refer or not to refer, so it ends discussion.
Mayor, could the Chairman of that committee weigh in on this, it's been to the committee twice now.
But the motion to refer has precedence, if it's turned down, then they can weigh in on it and discuss it as council, there's no problem, referrals, the purpose of a referral is to go back for discussion, and not to have it here in the council, so, we do have a motion, a second, if that fails, then they can weigh in, and discussion will begin again, so, we have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no?
No.
I think the ayes carry, if, did I hear right, correctly, the ayes carried, is refer?
Change your mind to no.
To, to not to refer?
No, to refer.
To refer, okay, then, then they take it, goes back for referral, thank you, and discussion will take place there, thank you.
Item seven is business by department heads, seven point one, Finance Director Vito is submitting a two thousand and nine budget adjustments to the general fund expenses.
You need a motion?
Ooh.
Motion by Counselor Dobek, seconded by?
Counselor Bender.
Olson Bender, okay, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, seven point one passes.
Seven point two, Assistant Public Works Director Getzmann is requesting approval to award the monitor well sampling and reporting contract to SEH, Inc., in the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars annually.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Bridge, seconded by Counselor Dobek, discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, seven point two passes.
Seven point three, Assistant Public Works Director Getzmann is requesting the council approve to award the contract for brush and tree grinding services at city-owned tree dumps to Campbell, Inc., for two dollars and thirty cents per cubic yard.
Motion by Mr. Bridge, seconded by Counselor Dobek, discussion, Counselor Olson.
Jeff, two dollars and thirty cents a cubic yard for one, and sixty dollars a cubic yard for another.
I saw that.
Just a brief explanation, please.
Yeah, Counselor, you did read that correctly, and it is somewhat hard to believe, when Nancy opened these bids a couple weeks back, we had the same conversation, that it seemed drastically different, they have a lower number, they have a bigger machine, more horsepower, and they are doing a contract for the WSSD in the very near future as well, which helped them reduce their mobilization cost on this, and they're willing to come over and do it for that, they are gonna be paid based on the measured pile of material that they grind, we're at low risk that way, basically, what they grind is what we pay them for, so, they were okay with their bid price, and we checked the references, and they all checked out and had great things to say about their work, so.
Dan, I actually sent it back, 'cause I thought it was a typo, I really did, I thought, this can't be right, so, Mr. Finsland.
Just out of curiosity, was this based on the finished ground-up product, or the pre-ground product, if they're, you know, if it's cubic yard of unground waste, it's certainly a little different volume than that's the final output.
Right, yeah, no, they, they could look at the existing piles to be ground, and then agree to be paid based on what they generate when they're done, so, you know.
Interesting, seeing no more discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, seven point three passes.
Item eight point one, Mayor Ross is recommending to appoint Joy Bedard to the Superior Business Improvement District Board of Directors, and reappointing Judy Strandberg and Reggie Lickle to the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities.
Motion by Counselor Finsland, seconded by Counselor Dobek, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, eight point one is approved.
Item two, Mayor Ross is requesting the council approve the creation of and appointments to an animal shelter task force, the task force mission is to review the January two thousand and ten Shelter Evaluation Program Report by the Humane Society of the United States, and submit recommendations to the council for the construction and management of a new animal shelter facility.
Motion by Mr. McKenzie, seconded by Esther Dobek, any discussion, and let me just say this before Mr. McKenzie, I have been just incredibly impressed with the work Mr. McKenzie has done on this project, he's spearheaded this from the beginning, he has a passion for it, and I believe he's gonna be at some ribbon-cutting ceremony someday in the future when we accomplish this, Mr. McKenzie.
Yeah, I know, Mayor, this, this thing has been talked about since two thousand and three, as you know, and something that's been much needed, there's been a lot of discussions since I first become a city counselor, two thousand and eight, and now with the organization of this, of this new task force, it's gonna allow this thing to go forward a lot faster, and I wanna thank you, Mayor, for, you know, really looking at this and choosing these people, I know there was a lot of people that wanted to be on it, and so, it makes for a real difficult decision, but, thank you, Gene, you know, for all that you did, and everybody else that worked to choose these people, I want everybody to know that these are gonna be open meetings, and that anybody that's interested in this, we welcome the input, and, so, anybody who wants to come there, maybe didn't get selected, but has some knowledge, that'll be wonderful, so, thanks a lot.
Well, I know if we didn't do this, the cats and dogs would start a petition and demand that we did, so, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, it was unanimous.
Item ten point one is a resolution introduced by City Clerk Klon, requesting the common council support the Wisconsin Cable customer repair legislation.
Motion by Counselor Bridge, I think, and Dobek, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, ten point one passes.
Ten point two is a resolution introduced by the Plan Commission, authorizing a special use permit for agricultural outdoor sales at forty-eight twenty-seven East Second Street.
Motion by Mr. Henry, seconded by Mr. Bridge, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, ten point two passes.
Ten point three is a resolution introduced by the Plan Commission, authorizing a special use permit for agricultural outdoor sales at fifteen thirty Tower Avenue.
Motion by Mr. Henry, seconded by Mr. Bender, I believe, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, ten point three passes.
Ten point four is a resolution introduced by the Plan Commission, authorizing a special use permit for agricultural outdoor sales at twenty-nine eleven Tower.
Motion by Counselor Dobek, seconded by Counselor Olson, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, ten point four one passes.
Resolution, or, item ten point five is a resolution introduced by the Community Development Division, setting a public hearing on May eighteenth, for the two thousand and nine consolidated annual performance evaluation report.
Motion by Mr. McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Dobek, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion passes.
Item ten point six is a resolution authorizing the transfer of property located on Barker's Island to the redevelopment authority of the city of Superior.
Motion by Counselor Anderson, seconded by Counselor Dobek, any discussion, Mr. Olson.
Question for Jason, is part of this transfer property the part that was voted to be blighted property?
Yes, sir, the, the piece of property, I think it was a couple of months, about a month or so ago, where the council did a resolution, considering that, if you look on your map, the old, the current cradle storage piece is blighted property, when we went through the first iteration of this, two or, two years ago probably now, almost two and a half ago, with Marshall Williams' proposal, we had already declared the other piece, which is parcel C two, as blighted property already, so we're already there, so yes, yes, sir, to answer your question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson, any other questions, seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, resolution passes.
Item ten point seven is a resolution approving the form of lease, notice of lease, approving the form of notice to lease.
How you doing tonight?
Not so good. To lease real property to Sailboats, Inc.
Motion by Counselor Anderson, seconded by Counselor Dobek, any discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, ten point seven passes.
Eleven point one has been referred back to Public Works Committee, eleven point two is an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Committee, amending the traffic code, Schedule A stops by deleting one and two-way stops at Hammond Avenue and North Thirty-first Street, and adding three-way stops at Hammond Avenue and North Thirty-fourth Street.
Motion by Mr. Olson, seconded by Mr. Bender, all, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, eleven point two passes.
Eleven point three is an ordinance introduced by the Chief Building Inspector, to amend the City Code of Ordinances, Section ten point one D, permit fees.
Motion for Mr. Olson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bender, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, eleven point three passes.
Item twelve is business by public, twelve point one, West Cruz KLP Studios is requesting to waive City Code Section eighty-six dash seventy-four, possession of weapons, discharge of firearms, for civil war reenactment.
We have a lot of on this, I knew there would be, and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, twelve point one passes, we have one more person signed up for business by public, Mr. Marty Curtis, sorry, did I, Mike, did I, Mr. Herrick, did I pass you up too quickly?
I'll bring it back.
You had your hand kinda like halfway up, heading for the button, or?
I was seconding it, so.
Oh, good, okay, okay, we have a motion, a second, so, thank you so much, Mr. Curtis.
That doesn't count as part of my three minutes, does it? I came here tonight to, as most of you know, I'm Chairman of the Local Landlord Association, and I also do lead abatement work with, with lead paint, and I've organized an informational meeting on, it's Monday, April twelfth, at six thirty, at the Public Library, there's several changes that are going on with the building inspection permit application, that are gonna affect most of the contractors and most of the landlords in the city of Superior, so I'm working with, Dan Curran is gonna be there to answer questions, and I also got Vicky Drake, who worked for years with the lead paint issues, and kind of a question and answer, to try to get people up to speed, because basically, if you don't have these things, you're probably not gonna get permits, so, and part of this is to the public watching on TV, too, but, the meeting is Monday night, April sixth, at six thirty PM at the Public Library, and there will be an article in the paper on Friday.
It'll be April sixth, it passed.
What's that?
Twelve. Must be the twelfth, can't be the sixth.
Okay, I can't read my own writing, April twelfth, Monday, April twelfth, and hopefully, I don't know how close I am to my time limit, but I can also have a few. few seconds to say something nice about Ed.
What time, Marty?
All right. While I keep saying nice things about Ed, I can have five minutes.
Well, you might be stretching it.
You know, I'd just like to say, you know, most of you are aware that I've been at a lot of council meetings in the last few years, and Ed has always been very professional and just listening to him talk, he just has a way about himself and he attracts your attention and he's always interesting to listen to and I guess I appreciated watching him on TV or coming and listening to him and he always seemed very well-informed on whatever subjects and quite honestly, I'm gonna miss you, Ed. Thanks.
Marty, what time is your meeting? What time is your meeting? On the twelfth, what time? Did you say a time?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
Well, Mr. Anderson, I'm gonna let you call the adjournment.
Thirty-three minutes, that's, you know, that's finally a halfway decent meeting as